Okay, good evening and welcome. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Wednesday, November 1st, November 2023 to order. At this time, a lot of things to think about. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Very warm to please stand and join Alderman Ortiz in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Mr. Crupp, if you'd please call the roll for tonight.
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Dickman? Jobchin? And Ortest?
Here.
Seven present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your opinions and comments, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. And for anybody in here, if you'd please put your cellphone on silent or turn it off simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council on any particular item on the agenda or at the end, please come to the podium. If there's multiple folks, if one of you, the next person could stand by either one of the poles so I know that someone else wants to talk, that would be helpful. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes. Again, folks, we want to hear from everyone, so please refrain from saying anything while people are talking. We don't want people to disrupt the meeting so we can hear from everybody, so this is the warning for that. If you do that, we might have to ask you, I might have to ask you to leave or adjourn early. We don't want to do that because we want to hear from everybody, please. So, thank you. City Administrator, Ms. Merritt, tonight, any update?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Very good. We have two public hearings this evening, one under Public Works and one under Finance. Public Works, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Centennial Bridge Seawall Repair Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
You have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Next one is Finance. Alderman Condon will read. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Here I open a public hearing on granting a gas easement on city-owned property located at the southwest corner of West River Drive and Marquette Street, partial noted on the agenda to Mid-American Energy. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes the public hearing. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Next series petitions and communications, are there anything from any older folks? Seeing none, we'll move to the areas of discussion, which are community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first one is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-04, being the request of Jason Cusino to rezone approximately 1.19 acres of land generally located southeast of the Grand Avenue and East 46th Street intersection at 801 East 46th Street from RMF multi-family residential district to I-1 Light Industrial zoning district. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration ordinance for case REZ 23-05, being the request of Anthony Properties to rezone the 10.17 acres of Lot 1 of Phoenix Center Sixth Edition and the 5600 block of Tremont Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial to RMF multi-family residential district. Please note that Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial. Eight votes are required for the passage. Is there anyone from the public here to comment? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please. You have five minutes.
Tom Pasternak, Davenport attorney and attorney for the petitioner Anthony Properties. So basically, we've done a lot of talking so far to date, and so the issue really comes down to the fact that I think you know what staff's arguments are, you know what the petitioner's arguments are, and since we need all of your votes in order to get this through, I think we're going to sit down and hopefully listen to comments from council so that we know how to attend to your concerns as well. Thank you. The developer is here to address any questions you may have. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please. You have five minutes.
My name's Dennis Platt. I'm in the sixth ward, and I'm interested in this project mostly in terms of whether or not it could be considered affordable housing. We've got 1,000 new jobs arriving in Davenport, and most of these are not high-paid positions. And I'm just wondering what our plan is to house some of these families that aren't here yet. And I guess I'd be interested in knowing if these are apartment buildings, what would be the spectrum of monthly rents charged, and what can the community expect that way? Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? All right. Seeing no one, we will move to council with comments. We'll start with Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I took the time out to go out and talk with these folks, and these are not affordable housing. This is market rate housing. So these are geared towards specific folks, and unfortunately, that's not a lot of what we are dealing with in the city then, and so just to let you know. But I want to thank you guys for taking the time out to bring me up to speed because I was unclear on what was going on with you. So, no question, but I just want to thank your folks for dealing with me that day. I really enjoyed myself. Thank you so much.
Alderwoman McGinnis?
I had a question. If we were to approve this, and I'm looking at Brian here, that's a T-intersection out there. It's wide enough maybe for three lanes, but I'm wondering about the amount of traffic there and if a light would be potentially required, and if so, I mean, how we figure that out, and then could we require them to pay for it, bottom line, the redevelopment?
Brian Shad, City Engineer. We could check with city staff to see what kind of existing traffic load there is now. Just shooting from the hip, I don't believe there'd be enough warrants for a light to go in there, and there's not enough traffic generated by this proposed development to warrant a traffic impact study.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much. Again, this is an eighth ward, and I've spoken at length why I support this project. I really do believe we need more residential housing, apartment housing rentals up in the northern part of the city, particularly the northwest part, and this is a proven one. I feel comfortable that we can address all the concerns, and I'm sure we'll be meeting if there's any conditions that we think might need to be added to this to, you know, take care of some of the issues that were brought up in the staff report. So I just wanted to say that I support it, and just wanted to pass that on to the rest of council. Thank you very much.
All right. Seeing nobody else, I'll just say that I talked with Alderwoman Lee, and I think the course of action would be to ask our colleagues to move this on to third consideration while we continue to have discussions with the developer about potential conditions that we might consider in making sure that Alderwoman Lee and the entire council is good with the project as proposed, and then in the third consideration, we'll vote on it, and we understand it needs eight votes to pass, and we currently have nine council people seated, so we'd all have to agree pretty strongly on it. So I think that's where we sit. I would just ask the council to continue the discussion while Alderwoman Lee works with the developer, and we'll see where we're at in the third consideration and go from there. All right. We'll move to the next item, which is number three. Item number three is a resolution approving case F-23-14, being the request of E&amp;A Enterprises LLC for a final plat of 56th Enclave, a two-lot subdivision on 9.57 acres located north of East 56th Street and Lakeview Parkway. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, is there anyone from the council? Okay. I will just say that Alderman Jobchin, who isn't able to be here tonight, had reached out to me and asked that we keep this on discussion. There are some residents who are interested in this and are looking at things and may want to discuss it next week, so we will keep that item on discussion. Moving forward to item number four, which is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of vacated public right-of-way containing approximately 25,900 square feet, more or less known as Spring Street, located south of East 53rd Street between Scott County parcel numbers N-0709A01 and N-07098A02. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? If you guys remember, this is related to the rezoning for the luxury car dealership on 53rd Street. This would be the Hammerhead that currently exists at Spring Street. All right. No comments. We will move to item number five, which is a motion approving the local objectives for the Community Development Block Grant Program for the Year 50 Annual Action Plan covering July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward. You have five minutes.
Hello, my name is David Ezra Sidran. I'm a resident of the third ward. In Douglas Adams Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy, a city is about to bulldoze a man's house. The man objects, of course, saying that he had no idea the city was going to do this. And the city responds that the plans were, quote, "on public display" in the bottom of a locked filing cabinet stuck in a disused lavatory with a sign on the door saying, "Beware of a leopard." This is very similar to the city's, quote, "in-person, open-house-style public meetings," quotes, "last month that nobody heard about and few attended." However, last week, there was a different town hall held at Zion Lutheran Church, and hundreds of people attended.
Sir, is this related to the CDBG funds?
Yes, it is, sir. And I can assure you that the priorities of that crowd were quite a bit different from the priorities reported by the city in this document. The city states that the highest priority in housing services were, in order, transitional housing, senior housing, and owner-occupied rehabilitation energy efficiency, quotes. You know what the highest priority was of the people that attended the Zion Lutheran Town Hall last week? Number one priority. Buildings not collapsing and killing and maiming people. That's number one. You know what the second priority was? The city actually performing rental inspections and the city holding slum lords responsible. That was number two. You know what the next priority was? The city actually performing HUD inspections is required by law and not issuing rubber-stamped inspections that claim to have been inspected, that mobile home tie-downs and collapsing exterior walls of 324 Eighth Street all passed. That's what the citizens of Davenport really want. The citizens of Davenport want safe, affordable housing, but the city consistently puts slum lords above people. Any two-bit hustler con man who claims they're going to rehab an old building gets a resolution from the city supporting low-income housing tax credits, historic tax credits, and workforce development tax credits. The con man then buys a Lamborghini, and the citizens of Davenport get to die in a building collapse. I am asking that the city council not approve this resolution because the stated goals of the Community Development Block Grant Program do not in any way help the citizens of Davenport. They only help slum lords and con men. Instead, I would suggest that the city council instruct community and economic development to return with a document giving the needs of the citizens of Davenport the highest priorities. One, stop putting slum lords over citizens. Two, insist that the city departments actually perform necessary inspections. Three, insist that the city actually enforce code violations. Four, insist that when the fire marshal calls for a building to be vacated, it is actually vacated before citizens die. The citizens of Davenport no longer have faith in the city's ability to protect them. I urge you to make their safety the highest priority of the city.
Thank you. Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward. You have five minutes. We're talking about the priorities of CDBG funds for '24 and '25.
Name is Gary Ecklin. I live in Davenport, Iowa, what I refer to as the most white supremacist city in the United States of America. On this sheet, there is nothing that outlines what the city has currently outlined as the objectives for the Community Development Block Grant Program. So even though I'm looking at the agenda, I really don't know what the city is saying. But I know from many years of living in the experience, that, many years of experience living in this city, that the Community Development Block Grants never trickle down to the poorest citizens who, in theory, it's supposed to help. I can't, reading this agenda item, comment on what you guys are prioritizing because the agenda item does not say what you guys are prioritizing, but from many years of experience living here, I can guarantee you that none of this money is going to benefit the bottom third of the population in the city of Davenport, Iowa. And I wish there was something in here that outlined what it is that you guys are doing with this money, but I know the bottom third of the population, the people who work at minimum wage, are not going to be helped in any way whatsoever.
Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item?
My name's Deo Gilmore, and I live in the sixth ward. I'm a CAC member, and what the CAC does is they award these CDBG block grants to local nonprofits who apply. Okay. When the 50th annual plan was discussed, it was open to the public, and nobody showed up. Now they all want to come in, "Oh, we want to change the rules halfway." No, you had your chance. We meet on the first Monday of the month. I'm not positive if we're going to meet next Monday, right here in chambers, and I sit right where she sits. I won't name her name, but, so, you know, I'm a CAC member. It's the largest commission in the city of Davenport. There's 15 of us. We divvy out these funds. We get HUD money. We give money to, I'm not even going to start naming some because I know I'll forget some, but I'm tired of these people coming after the fact saying, "I don't, why is this, where is this going?" No, come to the meeting. Come to the meeting. You'll see where it goes. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this? All right. We'll move to council with comments. I'll take some privilege and speak first and just say that the CDBG funds are federal dollars. They pass through the city of Davenport. We've got the city advisory committee, which is 15 residents who volunteer their time to gather input from the community and ask them where they believe these dollars should go. This is the first step in the annual process, which we do every year for apparently 50 years, but every year I've been on council, and the CAC has done an excellent job of providing the city council with great recommendations in my time. To the gentleman's point, no, not listed directly on your agenda that you have, but in the green sheets and online, it is available what the priorities are, and I'm going to read both the public input for this and what the recommendations are so that you can hear, and I think you'll all agree that these are high priorities and good recommendations. So, the city's advisory committee is recommending the approval of three local objectives for the Year 50 Annual Action Plan. The local objectives were based on input from a survey, census data, the analysis of impediments to fair housing, and the housing needs assessment. There were also in-person, open-house-style public meetings at Eastern Iowa Library on September 7th, at Main Street Library on September 9th, at Fairmount Library on September 9th, and a virtual public meeting on August 30th. All right? So there is input. We also reach out to the folks, the nonprofits, the people who work in these areas, and ask them what's important to them. Okay? So there's quite a bit of public input that comes into this, and here are the three recommendations that the Citizens Advisory Committee is making for the upcoming year. Number one, improve the livability of Davenport neighborhoods, including available decent affordable housing for owners and renters and neighborhood infrastructure citywide. Number two, support programs to retain existing businesses and to attract new businesses with an emphasis on increasing employment and business opportunities for younger workers, low-to-moderate-income households, and minorities. Number three, provide support for human needs for the citizens of Davenport emphasizing mental health services and building life skills. Okay? So this is just the beginning of the annual process. If we approve this, it goes back to the CAC. They start their process for the year, and then they will take these priorities and they will figure out how to award the $1.4 million that the federal government gives to our community, and a good percentage of them goes to nonprofits who do social services, and we'll focus on these three items. Is there anyone from the council who has any other comments on this item? I'll give the mayor privilege to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to add, thanks for that explanation. We're always looking for citizen representations on all our boards and commissions. This is, again, thank you for saying, is one of our largest, and it is citizen representation that makes the recommendations, and many of the older folks hear from their people and make recommendations, so it's a wide variety of the citizenry, and we're happy, I'm happy, to take recommendations for people to sit on these boards and consider this work and making recommendations to council, and I've been doing this for 16 years, and the involvement of the different folks on the CAC is critical to how the council deviates this fund. So if you know of anybody, I'm all ears, please make recommendations to me or to the respective folks up here, the older folks, so we can have those, but, and we're always talking to the nonprofits about their interests, and they come and talk to the CAC, so thank you very much.
All right. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the members of the CAC who, you know, are here diligently all through the year doing this work. I have, when I was on the, what is now the project, but H. Project Quad Cities, I remember coming as a board member and asking for funding years ago, and they take their work very seriously, and I appreciate that. And I also wanted to thank all the not-for-profits to whom this money descends, who work to better this city in a variety of ways. There are many needs out there. Housing is one, but there are many other needs as well, and it wouldn't function in this city if we didn't have our not-for-profits there, so I wanted to thank them. I know that, in terms, I know that there is, they are invited to have input into this process as well. There's a very structured way. As a member of the housing cluster, I'm, you know, invited to participate, and others are invited to participate. So I did not choose to do that because I didn't feel it was appropriate for me, but that is offered to not-for-profits as well, so as part of this process. So there are a lot of people in this mix that make this happen, and thank you for the work you do.
All right. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Alderwoman Lee, will you please set our agenda, remembering item number three should be kept on discussion?
Yes, thank you very much. I move that items one and four be placed on consent, and two, three, and five be placed on discussion.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Our agenda has been set.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next series, public safety. Alderman Jobchin is not here, and Alderwoman Dickman is not here, so I will read. The first item is a third consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule 7 No Parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by removing Perry Street along the east side from 12th Street to Kirkwood Boulevard between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, except holidays therefore, therefrom. Any public with discussion? Any council? Very good. This will move on. Item two, first consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule 7 No Parking of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding West 47th Street along the north side from Pine Street West to the dead end. Anybody from the public to discuss that? Counsel? Very good. Item three, motion approving a noise variance request on listed dates and times for an outdoor event. Freight House Farmers Market, Jingle and Mingle in the Mississippi Freight House, 421 West River Drive, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday, December 1st, and then 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturday, December 2nd, 2023, and 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Sunday, December 3rd, 2023, for outdoor music over 50 dB-A. Anybody from the public want to discuss that? Counsel? Very good. Item four is a motion approving beer and liquor license. This is for new license, new ownership, temporary outdoor area. The first one, Jingle Mingle in the Mississippi Freight House Farmers Market, 421 West River Drive, temporary event, November 29th to December 3rd. License type, special class C beer wine. Anybody from the public? Counsel? Very good. Next is the Wooden Nickel, and I'm going to read the rest of those. 2042 West 3rd Street, new license, new ownership, license type C. The Last Picture House Cinema Paradiso, 325 East 2nd Street, new license, license type C. There is a note pending, this is pending review by all assigned city departments. And then the last one is the Christmas Cottage, 902 West Kimberly Road, new license, license type B, native wine carryout. Anybody from the public want to discuss those that I just read? Counsel? I see Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I notice on the agenda for the Last Picture House, the item is pending review by all assigned city departments, and in the notes it states, "The Last Picture House," this was placed on the agenda by Alderman Condon and Alderman Gripp. Due to the timing of the receipt by the city, the application has not been reviewed by any assigned city departments at the time of publishing the revised agenda. I'm a little concerned because I don't recall this happening any other time during my time on council, and I know there's been times when some departments have weighed in on stuff and we waited on things, and we put it on the agenda, waiting on one remaining area. So, given that this is a little bit outside the norm of how we typically approve items, I'd like to ensure that the applicant is in good standing, specifically that he has a building, his building has received a CO, C of O, and at least a TCO, that's occupancy permit, and also I'd like to know if the applicant has any outstanding permits, property violations, or unpaid licenses. So if I could get that by next week to help me make a decision, that'd be great.
Thank, are you good? Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Okay. Alderwoman Lee?
And to build on that, I ask that this be put on the discussion agenda.
Roger. Okay. Alderman Condon?
I want to show appreciation for Alderman Dunn's comments and for Alderwoman Lee's sentiment, and the developers here today showing a, you know, willingness to answer questions and participate in the process, and, you know, what I'll weigh in on is the developer has been bringing us the right kind of investment downtown and, in turn, bringing us tenants that are, you know, reflective of the type of investment that he's making in the real estate. So to my mind, he's in the best standing in many ways, and, you know, if we're going to bend the rules, it needs to be for a compelling reason, and with the destination Iowa dollars in play, and with the opportunity to show the state of Iowa that we can execute on these things, and make this our first completion of a project with many more hopefully to come, I think that's pretty compelling. But we'll take an opportunity to continue discussion, to wonder out loud about the social engineering that we have available to us to try to influence better behavior because we keep getting put in this position where we're faced with canceling Christmas, and I don't want to cancel Christmas if there's a way that we can get this done, but simultaneously, I think what we're all saying is we don't want to encourage this behavior. So, again, as I've been bringing to staff, perhaps if we could put a fine structure in place or something so that if it really is a priority, the applicant can choose to decide to place their priority by paying the fine as opposed to calling in a favor or asking for a favor because there's really no other mechanism available to them if they've missed a debt. they've missed a deadline. So that sort of speaks to both my appreciation to your guys' concerns, the compelling reason why I think we should consider getting this one done and hopefully a path forward to try to make this process a little less painful and give a little bit more support to staff where we can. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I want to note Alderman Dunn's concerns and say I agree with those concerns, and I want to be clear that I'm not asking for any steps in the process to be skipped. I'm just asking that we try to usher our process as quickly as can, as we can for the petitioner. And for the petitioner, I would say if this is our city's priority to help you out in this regard, it needs to be your priority and you need to be made available for anything that the city needs from you. And if we're not able to jump through all of the hoops next week, right, the building has to be signed off on before the opening, and we'll address that next week. So obviously, it'll stay on discussion, but encourage the city, our staff to be as proactive as we can and for the petitioner to hold up his side of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Anybody else? Okay, so noting all those, obviously it'll stay on discussion. Ms. Merritt, you have your direction that by next Wednesday, there has to be a lot be done here for the council to be considering this, and I want to just echo to the devil I see him. Please be available for stuff because if there is issues, you have a week, so, okay. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, now, the rest is annual license renewals. Don't read those, they're on your agenda. I'll accept a motion to put all on consent except for keeping the picture house on discussion. Motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Okay, the next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution accepting the work completed under the West 43rd Street, Lincoln Avenue to Linwood Avenue reconstruction project by Centennial Contractors in the amount of $480,576.19. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution accepting work completed under the North Clark Street, West 11th Street, the West 13th Street reconstruction project by Five Cities Construction in the amount of $683,368.63. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution accepting work completed under the West 54th Street, Kelling Street to North Hall Street reconstruction project by Five Cities Construction in the amount of $317,811.15. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution including the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Centennial Bridge Seawall Repair Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel?
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Yes, could we just have a sort, I'm sorry, a short description of this project, why it's coming forward now? Thank you.
This is a portion of the seawall that is directly underneath the Centennial Bridge, and a portion of that is really the connection between the stacked block wall that was original and the concrete wall. That stacked block wall has started to sink and move away. So this project will be rebuilding that section, rebuilding a short section of the top of the rest of the stacked block wall and a couple of broken sections of the concrete wall. And we're going to add in a little bit of storm sewer right there, just so this doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding a contract for the Blackhawk Creek and Walnut Creek Clearing Project to Airing Works LLC in the amount of $278,050. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a contract for the sanitary sewer condition assessment within the Silver Creek Basin to McClure Engineering in the amount of $718,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Yes, my name is Gary Eckman, and I have decided that I want to object essentially permanently to everything to do with the sewers. The sewers unfairly are financed by the poorest people, and I just think, I just object to the way the sewers are built. They used to be included on the property taxes, and then they came up with the scheme where if the city spent millions of dollars on staff time and postage and, and printing and mailing costs, they could shift the burden from the property taxes to the poorest people. And, and then they could, of course, take more property taxes. But I just want to object 100%, and the way that the sewers are funded here, where the poorest people pay more than their fair share, I object to. And I do want to point out that a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that I was forced to pay approximately 250, 280, some amount of money for my sewer bill, most of which was for water for my gardens, and most of my plants were destroyed by the city, which declared it illegal for me to grow blueberries and tomatoes and blackberries and raspberries. And police officers with guns came and smashed my blueberries and my raspberries and my blackberries.
Stick to the item, please.
I object to this, I object to the funding. I, I started to mention, I was told by an alderperson two weeks ago that someone from the city would provide me with some paperwork or some forms that you don't have to pay as much if you use a lot of water on your garden, there's some kind of scheme where the city gives you a break on your sewer bill. I paid my sewer bill under protest, and the alderperson said a city staff member would bring me some paperwork, and they did not do so. And, you know, if you're, if you're watering your garden, you know...
Could you stick to the item, please?
Well, it's a sewer-related, but anyway, I'm forced to pay, I'm forced to pay my sewer bill for water that I use to water my garden, and the city destroyed my garden because they hate Native Americans and mixed-race people. So I'll sit down, I'll sit down, but if the city staff could bring me whatever kind of paperwork it is that you're supposed to get a break on your bill for the water that you, that you water your plants with, for the plants that the city destroys because they hate you, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a motion awarding a contract for the demolition of 2,800 Eastern Avenue Building F to Johnson, Hawley, and Excavating in the amount of $63,500. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Gary Eckman, I started to sit down because I forgot this was up next, but I was, my understanding that this was a historic site, Annie Wittenmeyer site, and I didn't think there was supposed to be demolishing buildings there. I thought they were being used by social service agencies or for other things, and I object 100% to tearing down buildings on a historic site. This was once the, an orphanage, and it has a lot of buildings there, and they could be repurposed for something, and the idea of demolishing anything there is ridiculous.
Anyone else? Counsel? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'll stop pushing the button. Could, hi, could we just have someone talk a little bit about the difference? This is the Annie Wittenmeyer site, and I know everything is historic, and what's happening with this and when it was built and all that?
Correct. So Nicole Gleason, Public Works, about 10 months ago, we had a waterline failure that flooded this building and caused damage well in excess of the value of the building. It is actually a non-contributing structure within the Annie Wittenmeyer complex, but even so, we did take it to HPC and explain the circumstances and do have HPC approval for this demolition.
And when you say not, can you explain what non-contributing means to folks?
It was not built originally with the complex, it was an addition, it was added on later, and Family Resources has moved their, their services out of that structure because it was unusable after the flooding.
I believe it was 1960s or something like that?
Yeah, late 60s, early 70s, somewhere in there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Lee?
And HPC is the Historic Preservation Commission, correct? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a motion approving a professional service agreement for engineering services for the West Locust Street, North Clark Street to Lincoln Avenue Resurfacing Project to Snyder and Associates in the amount of $76,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a motion approving a professional services agreement for engineering services for the West Central Park Division Street to Marquette Street Intersection Reconstruction Project to Olson Incorporated in the amount of $88,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I would be glad to. I'd like to make a motion that all nine items be put on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is finance. Alderman Condon will lead. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents to grant a gas easement on city-owned property located at the southwest corner of West River Drive and Marquette Street, partial noted on the agenda to Mid-American Energy. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address item number one on finance? Anyone from counsel? Then I'll move on. And next, item number two is a resolution approving a three-year contract for digital storage to insight public sector of Des Moines, Iowa in the amount of $1,272,983.60 using National Association of State Procurement Officers Contract numbered, noted on our agenda. Anyone from the public wishing to address item number two? And from counsel, Alderwoman Lee?
I just have a question on number nine, on purchases from 10 to 50.
Okay, I understand. Anyone else on item number two? All right, and so item number two will move on. And below on our agenda, we have purchases of 10,000 to 50,000 listed for you. We don't read each of them individually, but they're noted here for you on your agenda. And Alderwoman Lee would like an opportunity to address, was it number nine?
No, it's number eight.
Number eight. Please, go ahead.
I understand, section nine. That's where I got the nine. I would, could somebody from staff, please, please explain number eight? What's a silica dust study? And where is it being done and why?
Nicole Gleason, Public Works, recently OSHA had updated their standards in regard to silica, so this is, for example, when we would cut concrete after a concrete pour. So we just had a consultant come in and verify that all of our processes were within standard, and we had the proper PPE. Yep.
So our two items are done. We've addressed number eight, and with that, I will ask Alderman Grip, would you mind setting the agenda?
I make a motion to place both items on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? That concludes finance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Next is any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for tonight. Next area, is there any public of business? You know what I read at the beginning, one at a time, stand at the poll, and so I know there's someone else who wants to talk. Name, order, address, not from here, love to know where you're from, you have five minutes, please address the council's body. And please, everyone, listen to what people are saying. Thank you very much.
My name is David Ezra Sidran. I live in the Third Ward. Five months ago, I thought the elected officials ran the city of Davenport. I know better now. In the absence of leadership from elected officials, city staff has filled that void. City staff runs the city of Davenport. City staff literally sets the agenda and then tells the elected officials how to vote. Days before the collapse of 324 Main Street, there was a secret meeting right here at City Hall with Andrew Wald and city staff. We know who was in attendance, but I'm not allowed to say their names. However, I'm sure that they will be deposed in the course of the seven lawsuits against the city. Hours before the collapse of 324 Main Street, the Davenport Fire Department responded to a 911 call because, quote, "A large multi-story building had bricks bulging out," close quote. When the on-scene Davenport Fire Department chief called city staff, he was told, quote, "The matter has already been addressed, and there was no further action needed," close quote. They left after being on scene for four minutes. The next day, 324 Main Street collapsed, killing three and terribly maiming a fourth. This is why members of Davenport City Staff are being sued for felonious manslaughter. City Staff has its own agenda, which is completely different than what the citizens of Davenport want and need. The citizens of Davenport want rental properties to be routinely inspected, the landlords forced to make necessary repairs, including making sure that tenants have heat throughout a midwestern winter. Davenport City Staff protects and shields slumlords, paying them with HUD and Veterans Funds, even though the slumlord didn't have a valid rental license and there were 74 active housing violations. Again, this is why city staff is being sued for felonious manslaughter. The citizens of Davenport want the homeless to be treated with compassion and empathy and to be sheltered. Davenport City Staff wants to push the homeless to Rock Island and forget all about them. The citizens of Davenport want low-income housing downtown. Davenport City Staff wants to gentrify the city, discourage low-income people from living in town, especially downtown, and encourage businesses that require no skills and pay low wages for backbreaking work like the Amazon warehouse, while simultaneously turning their backs on senior citizens who are housed in substandard conditions in rehab schools owned by out-of-state, for-profit developers. This is what happens when there is no leadership from elected city officials. City staff has acted without leadership like unsupervised children. People have died. The city is being sued for tens of millions of dollars, all because of a complete lack of leadership from elected city officials.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Katie Stewart, Davenport, 157 days, and we're still at the same point. Nothing being done. Still no answers. Are we going to see it? I really don't know. And I think some of you that were at the town hall, thank you, and I really hope that the people that were there saw so many faces that you don't see here, that filled that room, that proved that there's a lot of people not okay with the housing situation here in Davenport. They know that there's an issue. We have a slumlord, I might even call him a landlord, still receiving money while just another property was condemned, of the same landlord, slumlord, that that building collapsed, and he's still receiving money. When does somebody step in and take his license away? We punish bars, and we close out other businesses, but we can't deal with a slumlord that, you know, killed three people. How is that right? It's all about the money. We have a new business, great. That's great for Amazon. I would love to be in a building where I have a tax free for 10 years, and guess what's going to happen when that 10 years is up? They're going to be gone. While we still have people homeless, while we have people going through hoops, you know, I heard someone say about bending rules and stuff up here, I don't, I couldn't really understand where that was leading towards, but I really don't think we should be bending rules for anything. If there's rules, they should be applied to everybody and to every situation, whether it's below Locust Street, above Locust Street, over color, nothing. Rules are rules. They're not supposed to be bent. I just, when are we going to see action? Or can somebody direct us to who we need to go to to try to get people to wake up and press charges against Wald and people in the city that may have had parts into this? Or who do we get to where maybe we can see about taking the land from him over here to where he can't sell it or build new apartments or give it to the city where they can build, build the, build something and earn money off of it, when we could build a memorial for these souls that were taken from us? I would come down here every day and read a book on a green space with a plaque, memorials, and all that, every single day. But I don't want to see another building that people are making money off of. And I know I'm not the only one that wants to see that. I know it probably would be easier for people in this building to be able to look over there and see a building because then you don't have something missing. But shouldn't... have had that luxury, because you could have dealt with that by looking over there and seeing the issues for how many years? I just, I, you know, and I had, you know, a couple weeks ago, I had someone heckle back here. I don't know who it was, but had the nerve to say, oh, she's just one that comes up here and complains every week about a building. Do we not have empathy? It's lives that were lost. I don't care about a building. Three lives were lost. People were displaced. And I am sure each and every family member of those three, along with everyone that are displaced, are glad that people are down here every single week trying to fight for them. I have my own issues going on right now, and I'm here, because I have empathy. I love my community. And I want to see justice for these three, Brandon, Daniel, and Ryan. I do. Whether that's a year from now, two years from now, I'll keep fighting. Because I am a Davenport, Iowa resident and part of my community. I love my community. It's empathy. And it's not just a building. And that tells me some people don't have their priorities straight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Gary Eklund. I live in Davenport, Iowa. I want to speak directly to U.S. Attorney General Merrick Garland, if he could hear me from some magic way. Please come to Davenport, Iowa with prosecutors. Please investigate the unelected city government and the elected city government. Since I've been coming here the last couple of months, I have come to believe that not only the unelected government, but some members of the elected government have criminally conspired in a white supremacist fashion to violate the rights of citizens in the city of Davenport, including myself, including Sean Colvin Sr., including Ryan Hitchcock, including Daniel Prehn, including the Berry's. I believe that there was a crime involved that people should be prosecuted for. This was not an accident like a normal accident. I believe there was a criminal conspiracy amongst elected and unelected officials with landlords Andrew Wald, Chris Grimm, and possibly other landlords to violate the rights of citizens. One of the things that the city staff did was declare it illegal for me to grow blueberries in my own yard, and they sent men with guns. Attorney General Merrick Garland, I am a descendant of the Trail of Tears. Blueberry plants are an indigenous plant to North America. They have declared it illegal for me to grow blueberry plants in my yard, and they have sent men with guns to destroy my blueberry plants. Investigate whether that's true. Investigate whether the reason for that is because a landlord named Chris, or, yeah, landlord named Chris Grimm contacted the city, said he didn't like the plants in my yard, and the city said, okay, we'll declare it illegal for him to garden. 2021, 2022, 2023. And I want to address for a minute, what do I mean when I use the term white supremacy? I have a letter from 2021 to the mayor. Mr. Blank said the residents in 10 households in my mixed-race neighborhood are lowlifes, and that it is his job to go after lowlifes on behalf of higher-class citizens. He said the city agreed to help a landlord, I'm gonna summarize, but replaces black tenants with white tenants. He said, I wrote in this letter to the mayor, which he never answered, "I believe the city is acting as a white supremacist organization in my neighborhood." What I mean by that is, I'll give you one example, really simple, 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 basic. If I come out my back door and I find you trespassing in my backyard where you've jumped the fence, and I scream, "Who the hell are you and what are you doing in my yard?" And you run at me like you're gonna physically attack me, and then you explain you're with the city, and a landlord has complained that he doesn't like the plants in my yard, and he doesn't like having to rent to black people, and you declare that six specific addresses containing black people, that all the black children and all the black women and all the black men who live there are lowlifes, and it's not fair that this landlord has to rent to black lowlifes, you're probably a white supremacist. And I'm asking for a criminal investigation of the Human Resources Department to determine whether or not there are crimes that can be charged for the obviously blatantly white supremacist hiring practices in the city of Davenport in 2023. It's not 1950. It's not 1850. It's not 1825. The Union won the Civil War. Why do we have a whites-only section? And if, you know, if somebody's half Korean, great, perfect, wonderful. But it looks like a whites-only section. The Davenport City Employee Section looks like a whites-only section.
Mr. Eklund.
You go on the website.
Mr. Eklund.
I'll move on for a minute. You worked in...
A short minute.
It's my understanding you worked in the schools. I looked up the Davenport Community Schools. And according to the Davenport Community Schools, 55% white, 18.7% black, 13, almost 14% Hispanic, 9.7% multiracial, 1.6% Asian, small percent Pacific Islanders, not even 1% Native American, 0.25% Native American. What a great genocide you guys all did. You know, not even 1%, not 50%, not 10%, not 5%, not even 1%. 0.25% Native American in the school district. But if these standards are correct, and I don't mean to pick on the mayor, but anybody who worked in the school system, who looked at the student body, would look at the whites-only section and say...
Okay, we don't have a whites... You're done. You can sit down now. Thank you. And anybody who wants to disrupt out there can leave too. Thank you. Next.
Thank you, Council, Mr. Merrick. People watching. I've come many times before this council. We have a special time next week. We, as citizens, have been involved. We have a vote. Either you're good with the status quo, or you want to change. For me...
Sir, we're not gonna talk about the campaign or the election here, so change what you're saying.
I'm saying people's right to vote, Mr. Merrick. Is that okay?
Then you made that point, and now move on from voting or elections or campaigns?
I have no campaign. I'm just saying people are listening. People have seen. I've been told by coming to the meetings, this council and mayor direct the city, period. They're the ones that tell the city, this is our dream, this is our goals, this is what we want to do. Three dead, one male. I want to read something here that's near and dear to my heart, that I found out. I once, after my son got killed, everyone talks about justice. Justice, if you look up, has many meanings. Equality of being just, righteous, equalness, or morally right to uphold a just cause. The moral principles of determining just conduct. You know, I sit here and read this, and the most important one, there's several meanings. The administrated of deserved misdeeds or punishment. The administration of law authorizing and maintaining this, a tragic miscarriage of justice. Having justice before court to trial to achieve punishment for one's misdeeds. There is no justice. There is no city. There is no council. That's what I'm hearing. I've heard it for weeks and weeks and weeks. My personal opinion doesn't matter. It's people that take the time, family behind me, new family, sorry, collapse of a building, and now a city going into maybe bankruptcy. It's a shame. I'm looking elsewhere now, and I'm sure this is gonna make the council happy. Is Davenport my home? No, you kind of broke me, but as long as I'm still around and I haven't purchased the house yet, I will be here. I'm here to speak for the people. We have spoken. You are our elected officials to listen to us, not sit and play on your phones while people talk, not to bend your heads down. We are here to speak our minds for the council, to listen to us. We're begging you, do a good job, and it hasn't been done. So right now, justice is done. There is no justice. I read that. That was on the back of the T-shirt when my son got killed. The guy got, you're ready, five years probation for killing him. Is that justice? What's gonna happen here? Don't know, but I know one thing. We have electronic gizmos that came in and zeroed out this building because of the possibility of collapse. But it's funny how everything dug out was hauled off right away. As a city, have we done our jobs? No. As a council, have you done yours? No. Council's sitting here, yep, as the people speak. How is that showing leadership? How is that showing the city, the people of this city, that you do care? I think it's time for a clean sweep. That's all I'm saying. That's my opinion. I'm entitled to it. How that happens, I can't say. But I know next week's gonna be interesting. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What can I do, Sandy? Seventh Ward. I just wanted to come here and bring to your attention that, well, I don't even have to bring it to your attention, it's cold outside. It's very cold. And as I see all you are dressed for the winter months, so, or fall, winter, so you know. So I was riding downtown Monday evening, and I seen tents out in front of the shelter. I seen people laying on park benches and underneath the train rails. So I have been to housing cluster meetings and things like that, and I know that the shelters do not have funding. So they are saying that they may not be able to open or are looking at other ways, but I do know it's one of your guys' part to do so. So I'm asking that you hurry up and do that, because I don't want to see other people die like we've already seen across the way. We don't need any more people dying. So I'm asking that you guys expeditiously do your job and give them the funding. And don't cheap-shot them either. Don't be cheap. You wasn't cheap to clean up across the street for your friend. So don't be cheap to help the people out that really do need it. There's people out there that really do need help. Now, I know how people think, because y'all sit up here all spiffy, well, they're on drugs, they do this, they have bad luck, this, that. Help them out. You ain't got to worry about it. As a matter of fact, it's not even coming from y'all pockets. It's coming from somewhere over here, the budget. So go ahead, give them all that they need to, because these people could actually be great people to our community, have excellent jobs, if you just get them off where they are now. So invest into the people that you've been driving past. And that someone told me, if you see homeless people on this board, said you'll see homeless people everywhere in the United States. That don't have to be here. It don't have to be here. So it's cold. Do your job. Get these people some help. And don't be cheap about it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is LaShawna Dixon. I still belong to Fifth Ward. I think she made a mistake. I love every week people get up here and state facts. And as soon as we state those facts, we're shut down. I want to talk to my people behind me and to the people of the city today. I want y'all to understand something really quickly. Here, I'm gonna turn around and tell y'all. They do not care.
Ma'am, please address the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to tell them right quick. If they have not gotten the point, we get no care. In the last five months, we have been, we are living in a soap opera. A soap opera. And it's thing after thing after thing. I know I can't say this or that, but y'all know what I'm talking about. And then I'm on Facebook last night, and then I see another thing. Come on. Can we fix, y'all have a week to fix it. And we've been waiting for five months for y'all to fix one thing. And I want to make it very clear, I'm not gonna turn around and talk to nobody. They don't care. They're gonna figure out how to get their friend off. They don't care, y'all. But that doesn't mean we ain't gonna come down here every week and talk to them. But listen, y'all. They don't care. Well, I know a couple of them, you know, but I can't say that. They do not care. They are not gonna criminally prosecute nobody. These people, Brandon, Ryan, and Daniel, is not gonna receive the justice they should. Their families might get a little pull off, but they're not gonna get the justice they should, because they're sweeping under a rug, they're making up stories, and everybody's gonna come off clean and clear. Watch what I tell y'all. Because if they wanted it to be done, it would have already been done, y'all. It would have already been done. If y'all don't care, just simply say that. So then we just know y'all just don't care. But I can tell that already. But if y'all just said that, then we'd be like, hmm, all right. We done had lots of stuff happen. Selling videos. God, Lord, help us. Should be ashamed. Absolutely ashamed. It's embarrassing. Hopefully, next week, the embarrassment stops. I hope so. Well, that's on Tuesday, so we'll see. But I'll see y'all on Wednesday. Get down.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Diane Salmon.
Just one second, ma'am. Sorry, you have your time. Ma'am, if there's conversations, please take them outside of the council chambers. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. 157 days, still no justice for the residents of 324 Main Street and their families. I don't know how that's even possible, but I guess it's all about who you know in this city. I keep reading about how some candidates say they are for safe neighborhoods, but I respectfully...
Ma'am, stop talking about candidates, elections, or any of that. Thank you.
I respectfully disagree, because we have yet to see that happen. Andrew Wald has had another property condemned, and four more people are displaced because of it. How many more people are going to have to suffer because of him? Why has he not been arrested and charged with the deaths of Daniel Prehn, Brandon Colvin Sr., and Ryan Hitchcock yet? Any other criminal who's out there doing illegal activities gets arrested and charged. Why not him? I keep reading how people want to protect the family budget, and again, this brings me back to 324 Main Street and the recently condemned property of Andrew Wald. These families do not have the grand-scale budgeting that a lot of you and Wald have, and for them to have to find a new place to live will take all the money they have and then some. Why is no one from our city reaching out to these people and helping them get the help they need, except for a couple people? After all, some of you are to blame for this as well, since you chose not to do the right thing regarding 324 Main Street when you had the chance, and you are still allowing him to operate as a slumlord now. We, the people, are so sick and tired of the less fortunate being overlooked and often discarded because they need a hand up. We are so sick of the city spending money on frivolous things like fancy historical buildings, play areas, and flood plains, don't even get me started on that nonsense, and areas of town that have tons of money thrown their way. When are you going to get to work for the people in the areas that are truly struggling? Why are the homeless residents still not on the agenda? Their lives matter just as much as a rich slumlord's does. When are we going to see help for the West End of Davenport? I grew up down there, and it breaks my heart to see it rundown, but our city is so focused on a fancy river view to attract visitors that doesn't seem to care about the people who live and work down there. When I was growing up, the West End and downtown had a lot of great things going for it, but not anymore, not since the love of money and power became the focus for so many. When did things become more important than people to so many of you? When did the whatever-it-takes mentality creep into our great city and start destroying it? That may be the way you like to run your households and your businesses, but that's a crappy way to run a city. We, the people, will be voting on November 7th the exact same way that we have been speaking every single week. You may have tried to silence our voices in here, but you can't do it out there. I strongly urge you to open your ears and to listen, to really listen to what your constituents are saying. I strongly urge you to open your ears and to listen, to really listen to what your constituents are saying. I know there are a couple of you who are already doing that and even though you get looked down on by your peers, spoken to in unkind and dismissive tones from them, you never let it stop you and I thank you. We are grateful to both of you and we will have your back come November 7th. Philippians 2, 3 through 4 says, "Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit; rather in humanity, value others above yourselves. Not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interest of others." Actions speak louder than words, so if you want people to believe that you truly mean what you say, then please get something on the agenda for our homeless residents, since winter's quickly on its way and they need protection. Stop trying to run meetings like we don't have freedom of speech in this great country of ours. Stop Andrew Wald from harming anyone else and bring justice for the victims of the preventable building collapse. Our city deserves to have people in office who are for everyone, not just the select few, because all lives matter, matter whether you think so or not. We need to do better and this is still America and we still have freedom of speech.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Merritt, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion second to adjourn, all in favor? Have a good weekend. Thank you very much.